...meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, which already heard, make sure your cellphones are turned off. Any final action taken on a conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal and the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, December 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, December 17th at 9:15 in the same room. It talks about the consent agenda, but I don't believe there is one. Oh.
No idea.
I guess the minutes?
Yeah, I guess the minutes.
You want the minutes on there?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda, which is just the minutes from the October 28th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, we need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now for this part, the regular agenda, we follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present the report on each item, then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by the chairman, move to the podium, and state their name and address for the record. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter and take action. So, we'll let somebody, Scott, report on item number two.
Thank you. Scott Anderson from the Planning Department. And as you recall, we had a discussion on a transfer of an eligibility, 13-56, to transfer one building eligibility from the southwest quarter to Track One Nelson's Edition. And this property is located on 265th Street. And the discussion that we had at the last meeting revolved around the use of that property. And it was continued, if you recall, because you asked me to meet with the applicant. And I did go out there, and I will report back that I did meet with Mr. Skyberg on the property on the 31st, I believe, October 31st. And Gary Skyberg opened each of the buildings, and I went through them, and I have some pictures for you. This is the site where he is proposing to build his single-family residence, sort of where that pile of, there's a pallet with some posts and whatnot. It has a nice view, overlooks Four Mile Creek. And this is, he planted some trees there. There was some discussion about the pigs, and sure enough, there were six little pigs there. This was the inside of the large building that looked like a house. He opened up the, he opened up the building, and you could see it was being used for storage, appeared to be all of their equipment. This was the, this is the other side. This, this is the garage that faces 265th Street. This is the garage door that faces the east side of the building. There was, there's a kitchen, there's a sink in there with some cabinets, but there was no living, there was no furniture of any kind, and there was no stove or refrigerator. It appeared to me that it was being used for storage. You can see that that's what was in there. This is, this is their garden, which was next to where the little pigs were. And the, I did, I did inspect the, the large building as well, and there was no, there was, it was pretty dark in there, but it appeared to me that there was no evidence of any kind of commercial auto repair going on. There was no equipment, there was nothing that would look to me to be a commercial operation that occurred there. I'm not saying that he may not fix cars there once in a while, but it, there was not a business being run out of there. Our, then we would go back to our recommendations that it follows our density zoning. It's actually going to bring this lot into compliance because instead of having two isolated accessory buildings with no principal use, they would be building a single-family residence on the property, which then would bring those two accessory buildings into compliance with our zoning ordinance and, or better, into compliance, they were built prior to that being enacted. But we're recommending approval with one condition, that a right-to-farm notice covenant should be placed on the deed prior to the issuance of a building permit for a single-family residence. And you certainly have the option of adding some other conditions, that there be no business, that there only be one residence, but that goes without saying that it would be a violation of the zoning ordinance, so it would be redundant to put the conditions in there, but you certainly could, if you wish, to do that.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
My name is Gary Skyberg. I'm the son of Father Arnold Skyberg.
All right. Gary, do you have any questions or comments?
None.
Does anybody have any questions for Gary? All right. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? All right then. I guess we can make a decision.
I'll move approval.
Second.
And just what the, okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that's been approved. And the only other thing we have on the agenda is new business proposal for livestock odor and manure management.
I'll introduce this. About a month ago, right after the Planning Commission meeting, I was contacted by Jeff Thew of Reeves Building System, and they provided me with some information on new technology for odor control and specifically sewage lagoon systems, and asked to make a presentation to the Planning Commission. Originally, they were curious about what our options were for amending our zoning ordinance to allow for the spraying of manure. Right now, our zoning ordinance does not allow air application that has to be injected or land-applied and then turned within a certain amount of time. And I indicated that I didn't think that an amendment like that would be well-received by the Planning Commission. So basically, they said that with this new technology, that things are changing, and I felt that it would maybe benefit the Planning Commission if they give a short 10, 15-minute explanation on this new system. And if you wanted to proceed with the option of directing staff to investigate this further, to write some kind of ordinance amendment which would allow for spraying, you know, spraying the waste product once it's been gone through this process, that would be an option. So with that, I'll turn it over if you'd like to come on up and make your presentation. I'm not sure, you want to pull up their PowerPoint presentation? I'm not sure where he's at.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll show. So to move this back to court, we just need to move forward and back for you.
Yeah. I'm Jeff Thewey with Reeves Building Systems. We're a locally-owned company here in town, we're a division of component manufacturing. We build trusses for houses and apartment buildings. We also do ag buildings, commercial buildings with our Reeves Building System. And about three and a half years ago, we came in contact with a company, also from South Dakota, that has a aerobic manure management system. That's, they've just got done with a three-year, government-funded NRCS study to see if their system works, and they've proven, proven it out and have sites up and running, that eliminates or significantly reduces the odor from swine, dairy, beef, any, any kind of livestock operation. And I grew up on a farm, and I see a lot of things happening around the country. We do a lot of buildings in northwest Iowa, and if any of you have been down there lately, it stinks over there. They have nitrogen runoff problems starting to happen. And in South Dakota, we have a lot of local control, which is good, but it also makes permitting hard to do. And credit to Minnehaha County, it's easier to get a permit for livestock in Minnehaha County than almost anywhere else in the state, which is great. We just have another system we'd like to talk to you about that would make it easier to get livestock facilities approved, and also make life better for neighbors, the soil, air, water, just the whole gamut of things. But I'd like to have Kerwin with Expert Company come and describe the specific process, and then we'll try and keep that short, so I'm sure he'll have some questions. So Kerwin, come up and talk, and then we'll open up the question.
Thank you, Ken. I'm Kerwin Miller with the Expert Company out of Platte, South Dakota. I want to thank you all for allowing us to have a few minutes of your time. We feel it's important. We have been talking with some of the other county zoning and planning boards. This will be our first time that we've been before you folks, and again, I want to thank you for that. I know Jeff had made a copy of just the executive summary from our NRCS Conservation Innovation Grant. It was a three-year study that we just completed. You can go to the NRCS website, pull up that NRCS number, and they should have some of that information available. They are still in the process of downloading our report and putting it on there. It's about eighty-some pages in length. You have the short six-page version, basically, of what was accomplished. I'm going to try and run this and hope that I don't run into any trouble on here. Aerobic manure management is nothing new. It's been deemed very expensive in the past. One of the nice things about it is, is our technology has brought the cost down because we've found out we can do this with a one-horse motor. Some of the definite advantages of this would be the air quality. First of all, it avoids the formation of any of the greenhouse gases that are problematic, such as methane and nitrous oxide in the lagoons, pit barns, and also the field application of raw manure. It would also eliminate any other noxious gases and odors and pathogens. One of the advantages of it is for those livestock producers that have lagoons, they would not need to agitate prior to land application anymore. So just the fossil fuel that goes along with that is a big savings. Water quality issues. The aerobic management will actually retain and transform more manure nutrients into odor-free and pathogen-free crop-ready liquid fertilizer. And this is now available to put directly onto crops during the growing season. Very, very important, because most of your producers are putting on in winter and fall and spreading applications. We can do that now without the formation and the production of nitrates, which is one of the big bad words in the water quality business these days. Soil quality. We also deliver the aerobic microbial soil amendments in very large quantities to the soil now. One of the things that we found out is that we can reverse years of the lost microbial fertility, but we've also found out that we're growing beneficial bacteria in these lagoons, which would help to unlock the phosphorus and the potassium that's tied up in soils. Reducing or eliminating severe greenhouse gases is just one of the many things. Hydrogen sulfide, ammonia, volatile fatty acids, these are all things that are problematic when it comes to permitting large livestock operations. But we take it even farther. Our technology is bringing water up from the bottom, where most of the disease pathogens are, in the lagoon, and we're exposing it to the sunlight. And the ultraviolet light is actually sanitizing the lagoon. And we actually did E. coli reports on there, which you'll see some results in the next couple of slides, where we reduced it down to almost, to the point where you can't even register it in the lowest class anymore. But the biggest benefit here would be the risk of the runoff, because we don't have any nitrate that we're building up in the soil or in the lagoon anymore. The three-year study that we did supports oxygenation. They had a number of objectives that they wanted us to quantify, namely, to inactivate the methanogens like methane and nitrous oxide, which are all going up in the ozone layer right now and causing lots of problems. We'll do this by avoiding the excess oxygen that supports the formation of nitrates and nitrites, which are all precursors for the nitrous oxide. Raw manure in soil, while it's waiting to be broke down and decomposed, actually does form and start the nitrous oxide process. So we don't have any of that going on anymore, because we don't inject it. We're putting it onto the plant, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. But the lab samples that we've actually taken from our demonstration lagoons showed nitrate levels at less than .002%, and we've had them as low as down to .0003%. To put that in parts per million, you're looking at lower than 20 parts per million, in some cases, three parts per million, which is extremely beneficial. Reducing ammonia gas, that's really the big precursor out there with most of your livestock operations. That's what most people smell. It does support conditions favorable for converting ammonia, which smells, to ammonium, which does not smell. Now, you'll notice that there's a little difference in the ions. The ammonium is an NH4+ ion. When that is applied to the land, which is slightly negative, it bonds to the soil, it'll be absorbed by the plant. We have avoided the process of the nitrate leaching out or gassing off and volatilization. So we're actually retaining more manure in, in a plant available form that's crop-ready, that can be put on the crop while it's growing, as opposed to on frozen grounds or when there is no crop available. The lab samples that we've actually taken on our sites is showing that we've converted a lot of the total nitrogen to as high as 95% ammonium nitrogen. And that only is caused by oxygenating the lagoon. When we have no odor from the lagoon field application or barn cleaning, we do that a number of ways, but volatile fatty acids has always been known to be the odor-causing acids that are, are what you're smelling. And VFA's are very easy to, to measure in the lagoon. In an untreated manure lagoon, your ranges are anywhere between 5,000 and 10,000 parts per million, very, very high. Research has actually shown that even a sensitive nose, and I think women probably have better noses than men do out there, but the nose, a very sensitive nose can actually detect odors as low as 250 parts per million. Our aerobic lagoons consistently reported VFA's under 100 parts per million, which tells us we're not producing any odor. We will also be able to reduce or eliminate the pathogens from the lagoons. I touched on that just briefly a minute ago. Pathogens can become airborne, especially when you're turning on pit fans in pit barns or when animal waste is applied to the fields. E. coli is usually fairly prevalent on most of your animal site, animal production sites out there. And E. coli is often used to measure whether you have desirable or undesirable pathogen. And typically, your E. coli levels in untreated manure will be around 3,000 to 50,000 coliform forming units per gram. Our demonstration lagoons were reporting E. coli levels lower than 100 coliform forming units per gram, and for the majority of the time, often below 10 coliform forming units per gram. This sets it up to be able to go ahead and put it on with the center pivot. We've actually had the dry matter come down to about a half a percent in most of our sites, and these crop-ready nutrients now can be applied when the crop needs it, especially during the tassels time, which we'll be looking at here in a minute. But you gain the advantage of growing-stage nitrogen. In some cases, we have 11 different test sites in three different states for our project, and we saw that it wasn't uncommon to deliver 40 more bushels of corn when you could apply it at the growing season as opposed to in spring or fall. And one extra alfalfa crop. Instead of four cuttings, they may have five. We have a site up in Hutterville Colony that they planted a new alfalfa field this year, and ended up with four cuttings on a new alfalfa field, which normally would only yield about three. So there's no increased fertilizer costs, and there's no odor. One of the reports that we had recently looked at from USDA indicated that we're going to be seeing a lot more irrigation, there's going to be a lot more irrigation pivots being applied for, only because we came out of two of the warmest years we've had in a long time. But even applying it to V4 or V6 or even a V11 stage, where there's 11 leaves on the plant, is much more beneficial than putting it in before there's the seed started. As far as applying it at the right time, this slide pretty much sums it up. This is a slide from Midwest Labs in Omaha. We have them do a lot of reporting for us, but you'll see the appetite for nitrogen with a regular corn plant out there. And even with the genetics now, instead of 11 pounds a day per acre, you're looking at closer to about 15 pounds a day of nitrogen need per acre per day. So you'll see there's a great need to feed these crops, and the nice thing about it is it's in a pumpable form and can be put it out, put out with a pivot at that time. A lot of the benefits that we look at for crops would be your timing, obviously, the crop response and the yield bump, we covered a little bit of that, but your environmental benefits outweigh even the crop benefits as far as an environmental concern. Now, we don't have any problems with runoff and leaching anymore, because we've got the nitrogen in a much more workable form. It's not leaching, it's not slippery, it's not difficult to deal with anymore, because it's not in a nitrate form. The other benefit is, is that if we can put it out through a center pivot, which we are doing in a number of our locations right now, variable rate irrigation has really come into its age right now. And you can go over water waste and shut those nozzles off. So that is our preferred method of delivery, and the new manure practice standards that we submitted to NRCS recommend pivot application for distribution of our nutrients. This all allows us to increase our chances of permitting from our pivots, obviously, when we have less odor. The reason why we know that is we just went through this not too long ago in Brown County with the Brown County Commissioners. For those of you that are probably familiar with Brown County, Hutterville Colony is up by Stratford, they are in Brown County. And in 2006, they came to us because their lagoon looked like this. They had one pivot out there that they were pumping raw manure from this pig lagoon through one of the center pivots out there that they have right now. And they were halfway successful at that. Unfortunately, there was a lot of odor associated with that, but they do not have an area where they can have a deep well for actual irrigation, so their only form of getting any nutrients or any water on their crop was pumping it out of the pig lagoon. So they ended up doing that, like I said, halfway successful in 2006. They had a big problem, they had a lot of solids in there when we started, and about nine feet, and about 45 days later, we had the solids worked up to only about three or four feet of solids in the bottom. And that's only because of the aerobic microbes pulling those solids apart. So we had only a very, very minimal amount of solids in 45 days, and just about all of the odor was gone. One of the things that they wanted to do at that time was put up additional pivots, and they went to the Brown County Board and asked for permission to do that, and they were denied. They were denied because of the odor associated with that and some of the phone calls that they had been getting. We came to the rescue, and we put circulators on, aerobic circulators, which you'll see in this picture. This photo was taken about three and a half months after the last one that you saw there. So we're about five months into the project now with them, and you'll see that we have an open ring of water around the circulators in the ice, so that the pond does stay open even in the winter and months. But the beautiful thing about it is, is now there was no odor, there was no solids anymore. They invited the county commissioners to come back. They were happy with having a consultation next to the lagoon, asked to turn the pivot on, there was no odor from the pivot, and they encouraged the county to come back and possibly reapply for those pivots. Since then, they've been granted them. The way the equipment actually works is quite simple. We bring the water up from the bottom, we're not pushing anything down from the top. It's called an impeller, not a propeller. And what it does is, it brings up the water very slowly from the bottom, it travels across the top of the water as it moves away in a laminar flow from the unit, and then tumbles back down towards the bottom. That type of action is called a toroidal vortex. Probably all familiar with it with helicopters, they fly on that every day. But the beautiful thing about it is, it doesn't take a lot of energy to do this. We do this with a one-horse motor, and we can actually move about 9 million gallons an hour. Put that in perspective, if you had a 9 million gallon lagoon, and a lot of them have that kind of volume out there, we'd be moving and turning over the water every hour, the whole lagoon every hour. Brown County Commissioners, like I said, the Hutterville Colony came and made a request for additional pivots. They were denied. Circulators went on shortly after that. Commissioners Nancy Hansen, Tom Fishback, I don't know if I've got Tom's last name spelled correctly or not, and I should, I went to school at Upadest ASU, and Mike Weiss, we're all invited back to take a look at that. And one of the things that they were most impressed was, is the progress that had taken place just in a short period of time. They were amazed at the lack of odor, and they granted the permit. Since then, we now have a number of pivots that they have on there in addition to the original one that they had. But I talked to Nancy on Saturday, and I asked her a little bit about her comments, if she would have any, knowing that we'd be coming before you folks tonight. And she said that they were very pleased with their decision, and that they had not received any phone calls or any complaints from the neighbors since that time. You're welcome to give her a call. She told me to tell, she didn't know if we were meeting with the planning board or the commissioners last Saturday, I wasn't sure either, but she said she knew all the commissioners and wanted me to pass on our greetings to you. She can be reached at either her work or home number. She suggested that anyone that has any questions about that process, anything about us, whether they had any preconceived notions or had a different change of opinion after our equipment went on, she would love to hear from you. Here's a photo that I wanted to just show you of them fertigating soybeans last August. This would have been, not this last August, but a year ago last August. And as the drought came and really had its hold on Brown County last year, it was fairly drought. And you'll see that they're, here they are fertigating soybeans, and dryland farming to get 67 bushels an acre was quite generous, and they've not had that type of yield up there before. And again, it was a matter of a little bit of extra water plus feeding the plant at the same time. The original pivot, I believe, was the one directly west of the facility that you see there. That actually was the soybean photo that I just showed you. Two other pivots were planned shortly after 2006, and there is another one now planned for the beginning of 2014, which will go north of the complex. I would encourage you to contact Nancy if you have any questions on there. We would love to get your opinion after we get a chance to visit with you folks, if we get a chance to come back again. And we'd encourage you to come and take a look at some of our sites. We'd be more than happy to take you out on a tour at any place. With that, I'll have Jeff do the closing summary on here, and I want to thank you for your time.
One of the things we just wanted to make clear from the summary here is, this is a patented system that these people have come up with, and you're not spreading raw manure in the fields anymore. This transforms it into liquid fertilizer. It can be applied through a center pivot, which reduces the costs, and we've been dealing with the Secretary of Ag on trying to change the permitting laws in South Dakota, and one of the biggest problems they have is the roads. The roads get beat up by all the heavy equipment. And if you're familiar with a lot of these farms, they're having to haul the manure away in these honey wagons, and the tractors pulling them and making them in the fields, you get rid of that. So you're saving the costs on the roads to the county, the farmers' application costs, fertilizer costs, you're improving the soil health, you're protecting the rivers and streams from runoff, because it's not raw manure anymore, it's readily absorbed and spread on the fields when the crops are large. So it's barely, it's not even hitting the ground really. The air quality is better, you've killed a lot of disease pathogens, and your quality of life for all your neighbors is better, because it doesn't stink. We just went down to their site, both of these sites, this Hutterville site you was talking about, and they've got one down in Nebraska, Corus Farms, down by Columbus, and they have a tube hooked up to one of these circulators. They sucked water out, and when we showed up, they had just pulled the plug on one of the hog barns. Raw sewage was just dumping into the lagoon when we got there. We stood there for, we were there probably an hour, talking. We had Steve Bull and Aaron Curtis from ASU with us, because we've taken them to these sites too, to get their opinions on this. We were talking about it, and then we pulled the water out of the lagoon into a jar and smelt it. And I could hardly smell anything, and what you smell is kind of like what you'd smell on a farm after a rain. It's, it's amazing. It's amazing, and they've proven it through all these studies, and we're just wondering how do we proceed? What's the options? We'd love to present this in a lot more detail if you want, and to who. I guess that's our presentation.
Well, I am a Minnaha County Commissioner, and I guess I have a couple of questions. So what are you doing to transform this stuff into a different kind of substance? Is there an enzyme or bacteria or chemical?
There's no enzymes. The circulator, like you said, brings up the manure and the solids. The solids sink to the bottom and the liquids are on top, obviously. The circulator brings up the solids from the bottom slowly, and when it gets across the water, it starts breaking those molecules down because it generates oxygen in the water, which helps eat up all that bacteria. And that's the process. There's no enzymes you gotta add to the lagoon or pit or anything.
So if you're transporting this stuff to different locations, do you use a pipeline then, or?
Yeah, that would be the preferred method, yes.
Okay.
To answer your question too, Jeff, if you don't know, this is not something that is new. This is something that we've devised that's become better. The process does not move the water fast enough to disturb the bottom of the lagoon. I want to make sure everybody understands that, so that we're not worrying about tearing up the clay liner on the bottom or a synthetic liner that Raven might have put in. And we are working now with Raven and SDSU on a couple of hard sites right now that have a little bit of a problem with compaction to put a lagoon in. So this is not something that we haven't dealt with before, we've got a lot of experience with it, but we don't move the water that fast in there. The benefit of doing that, we're not over-oxygenating the lagoon, that encourages nitrate formation or nitrite formation. That is caused by excess oxygen. We move the circulators and the water just fast enough to convert the total nitrogen to ammonium form, not any farther than that. If you take it farther with more oxygen, you will be developing those nitrates. So the transformation process is done by the microbes. We're taking the oxygen down to the aerobic microbes that live in that mass, and they're the ones that are actually eating the solids. That's what they do for a living. There's anaerobic microbes in the lagoon that live in that environment without oxygen, and there's aerobic microbes. We want to encourage the aerobic micro population. You can only do that with oxygen. When you do that, they will breed, multiply, eat lots more, and they will pull those solids apart. We see reductions of four and five feet of solids in 45 days, this is not uncommon at all. Sludge buildup and removing sludge from the lagoon is a very expensive process, and it does have a problem of possibly damaging the liner. Very, very few livestock producers ever want to see the pond pumped down all the way down to the bottom, knowing that that might be problematic for them. This takes care of the farmer of bringing in equipment to agitate the lagoon before they put it out with a dragline and knife it in. What we're telling you is where there's no odor involved with this, and when we have no disease in there, we're not spreading any airborne particles that would be harmful, and there is absolutely very, very little odor. Erin Cordis from SDSU works with Steve Poehl, and she's corrected me in saying, you can't say there's no odor. But what we can say is there's no detectable odor. When we have odors under 100 parts per million, there isn't anybody in this room that's probably going to be able to smell that. So the beautiful thing about it is, is the transformation on here is caused by the aerobic activity. The bugs do all of that, and they only expel two things, pure water and carbon dioxide, which the plants love.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're talking hog manure here, you're not talking about fibrous cattle manure?
We've done them all.
Okay, where have you done a cattle?
Oak Lane Coliseum.
How many cows? They don't milk that many.
They milk 300 cows on there.
To me, that's not that many. Okay. So, because, you know, I know a dairy that had one of these, of course, I know you mentioned propellers, I think that was their system, got put in here, this was 10 years ago. It lasted six months and they took it out.
Okay.
Because it was not working. For us as a county to just arbitrarize, oh, well, let's just do this. We can't do that. We have to have proof, we've got to see that it actually works somewhere, and especially on the dairy farm, because as far as I'm concerned, I haven't seen nine-million-gallon dairy lagoon treated this way. And the other thing that goes against all physical nature in my mind is nine-million gallons on a one-horse pump.
Correct.
I mean, physically, the laws of physics would not permit that in one hour.
We're not lifting the water, we're only moving it.
But still, that's a little bit to say that it's actually moving and not just fluttering in the top. You know, but to me though, it gets back to, because I know you approached one of my clients regarding this, and basically what I told him was, $150,000, you don't know if it's going to work, you need a written guarantee that if this doesn't work, it comes out and you get your $150,000 back. Because that's my approach, because I work with large dairies, that's what I do.
Are you familiar with Vandergeest Dairy in Wisconsin?
I know where they are.
Okay, we've got the circulators on there, leaving them up there.
I could talk to the feed.
They've got close to about 4,000 cows up there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I know it's a big issue, but it works great.
They're very happy over there. Lee had a big odor problem, he's in an area where there's a lot of residential around there, Merrill, Wisconsin. You can Google Vandergeest Dairy, you'll see our equipment working on our lagoons up there.
But that's the type of thing, like I said, before us as a planning commissioner, we don't consider it.
Oh, we'd love to show you. You guys can't just make a decision without delving into all this. And that's all we're asking is to at least try and get your attention here to embrace the new technology that you're going to see a lot more of. SDSU is planning on continuing some projects with us, they're involved in one with us right now. Any other questions?
Well, I am interested in learning about it, and I agree with Mike that we have to make sure that it's going to work. I know that we had a hog operation at Crooks that was doing this with untreated sewage and sewage whatever, and there was issues with like aerosol wafting of oils and stuff across the highway onto automobiles and stuff like this. It certainly gives the industry a bad name. If you can invent a way to make it smell worse, I don't know, maybe bombs. But also, you know, broken pipes where then there's like a million gallons in the road ditch or whatever. You know, I guess these are the kind of things that...
But the majority of our large dairies, Jeff, don't is they don't haul manure, it's all hauled.
Yeah, this is, this up there was a...
Well, I know, it was a disaster. We actually hear about it every year. Just awful.
They've...
It's a lot of state owner and all that kind of stuff.
It is.
They didn't really care.
Muthington, Minnesota owner, but personally, as a county commissioner, I'm willing to look into it. I certainly know Nancy Hansen, and, you know, while Brown County may be number one in ag income, Minnaha County went from number three to number four last year. I'd like to get us to be number one, just because they've got more land, we have better farmers, right? Anyway...
If I may, may I make, my name is Darrell Christensen, I'm with Ray's Building Systems also in Henry'side here in Ince Falls. I understand the questions and the comments very, very well, what you've meant, and we're not here tonight to tell you that it's 100% no fault right now. But we are here to ask that you start to work with us in the eventual change of how we do things. Part of the problem with the dairy lagoons is the amount of matter that's in those lagoons. And what's not been said is that in some of the newer test sites now, as they've been managed to keep those materials out of the lagoon, the process works, and it goes on from there. And I think oftentimes, as we visit with people, it's confused with bubblers or aerators. That's not the case. And Kirwan, are you saying nine-million gallons with one pump?
Yes.
You know, I think, I think the majority of these lagoons, if you'll see, there's multiple pumps, okay? There is a process there, and, you know. We didn't become believers overnight. We've been working at this for three and a half years, and at one point, Andy said, well, maybe it's not for us. But we get lots of calls, folks, and yes, we're in the business of building buildings. Will this technique sell us a lot more buildings? No, that's not why we're here. Jeff and I both grew up on the farm, we both came off the farm for similar scenarios. Today, we talk to people who, they can't go out and buy more land to bring their sons and daughters back, they're trying to expand their operations for your lives. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, and that you haven't heard as this board a number of times. But this is a piece of technology that is growing in scientific proof along with its popularity. And so we would just like the opportunity to continue to show you solid research. We have an investment with our own land-grant college right here in the state of South Dakota, who are becoming believers and working toward it very, very hard. Our neighboring states, we're hearing similar things there, relationships with Kansas, Nebraska, Minnesota, Iowa State, they're all coming forth. And, you know, it's been what, 25, 30 years? A couple of you are experts in the dairy industry on your board, and many things have stayed the same. We have a need to change, and this will potentially allow that. Nothing ever works 100% across the board, but we're just asking you to go forward and maybe assist in the process as this is looked at. I believe that there's going to be benefits here. Jeff and I have spent time on, you know, the Governor's Agricultural Summit and trying to come up with solutions. And identifying particular parcels of property that are on particular roads and away from shallow aquifers doesn't seem to be a real fair scenario for me. I may own that land two miles down the road, and all of a sudden I'm being told that I can't have the same enjoyment and use of that land. We're just trying to help find another way that may engulf a process in which more people can participate with a better or broader range of solutions, I think. Is that an agreeable statement?
I think you've got our interest really, and nobody up here, I think, is close-minded, I think, we're all very open-minded. So I think, Scott, don't they need to work with you and maybe arrange for visits, or how would you like to proceed?
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, really, the, where we are right now is our ordinance precludes, does not allow irrigation of waste. So where I am at is, you know, I need the county planning commission ultimately, and then, I mean, and then ultimately the county commission to, if they want to move in that direction to allow this, given it meets whatever criteria, then, you know, we can start researching that. But tonight's meeting was really just to sort of show you what was shown to me, and if you feel comfortable in wanting to proceed forward, you know, I can come up with some ideas. And, you know, I, I just brought this to you because it's new technology, perhaps.
We're not looking for text suggestions, Jeff. What I think we're really saying is, is that we've got limited time, and you've got limited resources, but I think, and speaking for myself, see if there's agreement up here, we'd like you to expend some of your resources to learn more about this.
Okay.
And potentially schedule some site visits where we could kick the tires, so to speak, ourselves, and then based on that, we might ask you to the next step and look at tech.
Okay. Well, I can work, I can work with them, and, you know, and we could set up some kind of field trip, I suppose, to the closest location and see how it goes, and whoever wants to go can go.
Basically, this follows in line with our overall CAFO ordinance and the fact that we don't, our setbacks are not set in stone, they are suggested criteria, because as technology changes, you can change. And that's the whole premise of when that was all put together, that we didn't go with what, three miles? No, it's not. It's what's appropriate.
But, but the irrigation is set in stone, that does say it's not allowed.
And it shouldn't be set in stone at this time, because...
Past practice was...
Past practice is my word, you can have people out there irrigating more.
But I'll...
We agree, we agree.
I can work with you.
You won't get any argument from us. Yeah, so until, like I said, and as the technology, if it, as it changes, we have to adapt, and I think our ordinance has always allowed us to adapt.
Well, let me work with them through the winter. I don't think anyone wants to go out in January, February to a lagoon, but we'll work, maybe we'll set something up in the spring and we'll look, or during the growing season and actually...
When it's hot.
See how it goes.
And actually irrigate.
You can watch it over the internet, but you can't smell it too well over the internet. We've got cameras everywhere, you can dial in anytime and look at it, but it'd be great if you could make a tour.
Well, I'm just glad that, you know, we didn't have a heavy agenda, and I thought this would be a good night to maybe introduce this and start the dialoguing a little bit. So I can give you some updates in the future, and we'll get something set up for a field trip, maybe.
Scott is still shorthanded at work, but I know that this is of interest to me, and I know those Brown County Commissioners, and I'm sure that the industry would be interested in moving this type of change forward, and maybe they could help pay for the bus. I know that when we, I went to Granite Falls, Minnesota to look at an ethanol plant, when we were looking at that ethanol plant at Sherman, you know, we went to look at their operation, et cetera. So it's not unprecedented.
And the Argus didn't pick up on this big junk at the Granite Falls area.
I think they bought a sludge too.
Oh, my goodness. All the turd and lundy's coming out of there.
So you don't want that invitation to include the Argus at this time?
We would, we rented a van and took the people from SDSU, if that was, we'd be willing to do the same thing, anywhere you guys want to go.
I'll work with them.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
So don't go yet until you get your disk, your flash drive all ready. The only other item under new business, I suppose, would be a quick discussion about the vacancies in the planning commission. I know Susie's vac, is, term is up. I thought that Mark's was, one of my locations it said 2013, but then I had, I went to another location that said 2014, so I called Mark, and I think it is 2014, so there...
Just me.
Just one. But I wanted to make everyone aware, and Susie, if you would like to serve again, you will need to fill out the little application form, like, who was last, was that Wayne last, last year?
I had one.
You had to fill one out. It's just a formality, and then, but if, I'm just putting that out there, and so, and then in January, we'll need to have election of officers. So that'll be on the agenda, and that'll probably be one of the first things that we do in January, so we get the chairman selected and go on. So I don't think I have anything else.
Holfer?
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, I do have one other thing. I went out, thanks for reminding me. I went out today and I checked Mr. James Holfer out in Broward Edition, because today was the deadline.
That's right.
And there's the picture of his fence. So he did have his fence up. I was, I was a little bit skeptical because last Wednesday I had to go out to Humboldt and look at a drainage issue, and all he had was the post, no fencing. But, and I won't say it's completely done, it is 95%, he didn't have the gate.
It's nicely confined.
But he did have the entire thing without the gate, so I'm assuming he'll be putting a gate in there because you wouldn't want people stealing your stuff, but, so I will report that's, he did meet his requirement, so that's, thanks David for letting me remind me. That's all.
I talked to someone else from Humboldt, it was doubtful that he'd get the fence up, because this fellow thought this person was going to jail or something.
Well, I went out there and I waited till like 2:30 because I thought he'll be waiting to the very last minute.
It's actually fraud.
Okay.
What?
So you're not writing cases?
No.
So who are we going to get from your part of the country?
Oh, God, I don't know.
Have you had any applicants for my stuff?
I haven't checked with, they go to the commission office, and I haven't checked.
Steve's back here. Everybody's kidding. Thanks a lot.
Thanks for having me.
So Susie, next year you can put your application in for county commission.
Yeah.
Such a fun job, though.
Yeah.
He's out that way, he's on that, he was on that trench, heard that.
That trench, yes. See you later, happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for having me.
So Suzie, next year you can put your application in for county commissioner.
Yeah. It's almost ready.
She's got a good job though.
Yeah.
He's out that way. Well, he's on that, he was on that train. Heard that.
That train twice. See you later. Happy Thanksgiving.